Seven o'clock and we'll call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think just one or two more meetings our clerk may be continuing to be a little late. So in her absence, until she gets here, we do need a temporary clerk and I'd be happy to entertain any motions.
I'd like to nominate Kimberly Rice for temporary clerk.
Support.
Motion by Bill, support by Brown. Any other discussion? You're willing? Thank you.
Yep, she's better at it than I am.
All in favor of the motion for Treasurer Rice to be temporary clerk until our clerk arrives? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again for the extra work.
Not a problem.
You want me to start with roll call?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Supervisor Milky?
Here.
Trustee Thering?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Bills?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
And Treasurer Rice, here. Lisa is excused and she should be here soon.
We have an agenda in front of us. I did send an email out. Just if this board is inclined to take up the additional item I had asked for, it's only a very minor discussion. I just briefly want to introduce something, but I'm happy to entertain motions regarding the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda with the addition of a discussion about the joint meeting for tomorrow.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Smith. Any other discussion? I'll just add it's for the, what I was asking, the April 5th.
April 5th, I'm sorry.
The joint meeting.
I was just gonna say.
Jeepers creepers.
I'm sorry, Trustee Smith, you accepted that.
Yes.
Any other discussion? See none. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda with the one addition? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Agenda passes with the one addition. We actually have two presentations tonight. I was kind of excited to come. And I can tell you, I heard from other trustees, they're like, this is gonna be a good meeting. This is great. Happy to have some guests with us tonight that serve our township in various ways. And Mr. Stuldrad, do you have any introduction that you want to give?
No, I can leave that.
Okay, so we have the Chippewa River District Library updates from Lynn Laskowski and Ruth Helwig. But you've been here before and the floor is yours. And thanks for being here.
Come up here?
Yes, please.
So we're gonna split this up and I'm gonna cover a few things and Lynn's gonna cover a few things. Obviously, I'm Ruth, that's Lynn. And we have been on the board for quite a number of years and we're very pleased with how the operation of the library is going. We have a fantastic staff who come up with wonderful programs. If you haven't been to some of the programs, and Lynn's gonna talk more about those, so I don't want to steal his thunder. But you really should look at the program because it's just, it's fabulous. Statistics are looking very good. Obviously during COVID, things kind of plummeted for everybody. But the library did pivot during COVID and did things like having people call in for requests or put requests in online and then staff would run them out to their car. And that is one thing that has continued since COVID. Because if you have little children in the car, or maybe you've just had hip surgery, or you know, a broken leg, it's really nice to just drive up and have somebody hand stuff to you. So that was a service that they found very beneficial and have continued to do. The statistics in terms of usage of materials have continued to be strong and are growing all the time since we've come back from COVID. Statistics using the Wi-Fi, which was expanded during COVID in the past. You know, you could be a few inches away from the building and get COVID, but they found when the building was closed and people needed to have access to Wi-Fi, you know, they made the signals stronger so you could be in the parking lot or at the tables that are outside of the library and still get done the things that you need to do. And as you probably all know, so many things these days require the use of the internet. So if someone is homeless, or someone is trying to get their GED, or they don't have strong finances, they may not have internet access at home. And so the library provides that service to the community. And so it's important that that be there for the community to use. During COVID, the statistics for electronic resources, and again, if you haven't done that, there's electronic books, videos, movies, all kinds of things you can get through Hoopla and through Overdrive. I'm a great fan of both of those. I use the audiobooks all the time. I can be doing my gardening and cleaning my house and doing my laundry and still listen to a book. So just a great resource there, all sorts of materials in every genre that you could possibly be interested in. So all of the statistics are strong and they're moving in the right direction. Attendance in the programs has been strong and again, Lynn's gonna talk a bit more about that, so I'm not gonna say too much there. We have a good director in Corey. He's been active in trying to secure grants for various things. There was a grant that he recently applied for and there will be some solar canopies installed on the picnic tables outside of the library. So the public can come, sit outside, not today, but when the weather is nice and we don't have snow. And they can charge their phone, charge their computer, enjoy the nice weather and still have some shade from the sun and the elements. So we're excited about that. That one's fairly new. And that's a technology and innovation grant that he got. He also was able to secure a grant through the Saginaw Art and Enrichment Council to help fund things for the summer reading club, which will be coming up in a few months. And he also secured a grant from the Michigan Arts and Culture Council, again, for the summer reading club. And I think there are a few other ones. I was trying to go back through directors' reports. I feel like there was another one that, you know, that it was missing. But anyway, he has been actively trying to find other ways to fund things for the library and get some additional resources. And of course, the Friends of the Library also, which is a separate unit, does raise money and try to help the library in different things. There was, I don't think Lynn's gonna talk about this, I don't think I'm gonna steal your thunder, but we had a recent collaboration with the Friends of the Library, the Chippewa Valley Audubon Club, and the Chippewa River District Library. And we will be offering in the next week or two, some backpacks that a family can check out with birding books, binoculars for adults, binoculars for children. So if you have a family that wants to get outside, enjoy nature, they don't have to go birding, but you know, they want to go out and use binoculars, look at nature and enjoy nature, they'll be able to check those out and take advantage of that. So that was a great collaboration. Many, 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 yeah, I'm in all three of those groups, so many, many emails. But it was, it's great and I think it's gonna be good. I'm also gonna talk just very briefly, again, we don't want to take too much of your time, about library issues. I mean, I could spend hours talking about library issues. But as you probably know, there are a number of things that libraries are trying to have. Fortunately, our library is pretty good right now. We haven't had too many dealings with this. But across the country, you're hearing lots of issues about book banning. According to the American Library Association, which I'm still a member of, you know, it's up, you know, astronomically over past years. And libraries are on the front line of having to interact with the community and deal with that. First Amendment audits, do you all know what that entails?
No.
Okay, okay. So a First Amendment audit is also, libraries are experiencing these. So if a person will come into the library and under the First Amendment, they have the right to record anything in a public place. And they will come in, most of the time they're coming in intentionally to cause a confrontation, to try and cause someone to respond in a negative way. And their intent, most of the time, and I'm not saying there are people that are doing this for legitimate reasons, but much of the time, they have a podcast or something and they're trying to have something confrontational to put on their social media so they can get more clicks and more money and more advertisers. So libraries are being faced with that, with people coming in. One of the challenges for libraries isn't so much that library staff have a problem trying to interact with the person, but you have children and families and these people just come in and just start recording anything and everything. And so they may be recording children and then putting that out on the internet. But again, we can't. It's their First Amendment right to do that. So it presents a bit of a challenge of how do you navigate if a parent says, I don't want this person filming my child, but yet, you know, legally, they have the right to do that. So again, libraries are being trained on how to deal with those challenges. Have you heard of ChatGPT? That's been in the news a lot. So another thing that libraries are having to deal with, how do we make sure that people get information about how to research, how to find good information, when you have artificial intelligence that can write your paper for you and bash your test for you? So we're supposed to be a place where people can learn and grow and find information, but now artificial intelligence can do it for you. So we're not sure how that's all going to impact. And then the last one I'm gonna just touch on briefly is misinformation and disinformation, which is again, a problem of trying to help our customers, the community, understand how do you determine a face site? And being biased is not necessarily a bad thing, but how does a person evaluate information to say this is having a particular bias, this is more central, this is legitimate, this is not legitimate? And this is one I had only heard about in a Michigan Library Association workshop a few weeks ago. Pink slime journalism. Has anybody else heard of that one?
No.
That was new to me. So pink slime journalism is, there are entities out there, and again, normally, they're doing it for a profit. They will create a template that looks like a legitimate newspaper. And so they might call it the Mount Pleasant Evening News or something. And they'll put the banner, they'll make it all look good, and they will put their own news in there. It may have nothing to do with Mount Pleasant. It may just be things that they just want to get out there for whatever reason, but it's called pink slime journalism and this is popping up all across the nation. And so again, libraries trying to navigate, how do you educate users on that this particular thing has a certain bent, a certain position that it's trying? Not again, it may not be good or bad, but just so that people understand that this is not just someone giving you who, what, when, and why very neutral information. It's there for a particular reason. Again, good or bad, that is not the issue. Just people, making sure people understand that. So that's all I'm gonna talk about. I'm gonna turn over to Lynn. And if you're ever bored and you want another presentation, I did one for the Kiwanis a couple of months ago on the, what's going on? How library boards are formed, what we have to do, what laws we have to follow. And I'd always be happy to do that sometime for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I get to be the one that hands out the glossies. I think that I like my computer. I do a lot of work on computer. Since I retired, I've done less, but still do a lot.
Thank you.
And in the process, I appreciate computers. My laptop gets a lot of use. But I also love to have paper in my hand. It makes a big difference. I can look at it anytime I want to. I can go back to refer to it without having to recharge. I can do a lot of things with paper. So I hope these little magazines, which are for winter and spring of '23, will give you an indication. At thirteen pages, there's so much there. And it can tell you an awful lot about what the library does and how it functions and all the things that are available to you. Because we believe that communities have libraries and libraries are parts of communities. And we need to work together. And one of the great things about our library is that in our strategic plan, one of our goals is to work with as many community entities as possible. And here's just a short list of those that we have worked with recently. Green Tree, McLaren Health, Domino's, Discovery Museum, CMU STEM, that is Science, Tech, Engineering, and Math Commission on Aging, Mount Pleasant Parks and Recreation, Maury Courts, and other elements of CMU. I'll mention it now, but we've also worked with CMU to help with the film festival that was held out at the, give me the theater here.
Celebration Cinema.
Celebration Cinema, which was very, 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 very successful. So we struggled a little bit with our strategic project during the virus. We did all we could. Unfortunately, by the time we got to 2022, we had fulfilled seventy-five percent of what we had hoped to do. And that was really great. And it was done partly because our staff worked hand in hand with each other and with our director. Corey was very, very, very intent on making the library as successful as possible with a limited number of people that could come in and when they could come in and what conditions would allow. But things carried on and carried on very well to the extent that a lot of things got done. We're still offering new things now because of the strategic plan. And one of those would include removing barriers. When I first heard that term, I thought, okay, what all will that involve? Well, it involves improving the parking a little bit. It works with multilingual brochures, since CMU is open to a lot of foreign students. We wanted to work with that. We wanted to work with color copiers that are available to our users and also scanners, because not everybody has that luxury of a color printer and so on at home. And we thought that that was a great start. We also wanted to increase things such as our library of things. If you need to borrow some party elements from our library, you can do that. If you want to come in and borrow maybe a roaster, I guess that might be possible. We have a lot of things that we can help the community in that respect. One of the newest things that I think is pretty cool, because I love music, is that we have just completed setting up the local music section, which features Michigan artists, which would be very handy. If you've seen a group or heard a group and you want to hear them again, it's possible. We might have something at the library that would allow you to do that without maybe having to go out and buy it, or again, have to boot it up someplace and try to go with that. We also want to increase visibility for the library. We're trying to get more spaces for our magazines, such as the one I just gave you tonight. We get those out to the public. And we also want to participate in more programs with other clubs and so on around town. We're working on that. We want to have at least twelve of those. So collaboration is a big, big part of what we're doing. And now to tell you a little bit about our programming, which really, really makes me excited because there's something for everybody. Because the community isn't just us older folks, we old folks. The community takes in all kinds of tiny little people we call children. So in the process, in 2022, we offered three hundred and forty-eight programs. And that gave us a total attendance of twelve thousand four hundred and forty-three, which my math tells me that that's about a thousand and thirty-five participants that were involved in the special programs. And that doesn't count the number of people that came to the library to do their research or to do their reading, or to just sit down in a quiet place and take a look at a newspaper. So our library definitely serves the community and hundreds, well, as you know, thousands of people take advantage of that. A few of the programs, really quick likes so that you can get on to your business. We have Storytime for younger children and parents. We have craft kits. One of the latest ones was the opportunity to come in and put together a read at Christmas time. The Kids in Culture program with Mount Pleasant Parks and Recreation had a fossil dig, if you will. We co-sponsored with the community, with the Commission on Aging, a fantastic presentation by Irene Miller, a Holocaust survivor. And we were thrilled because we had to keep bringing in chairs. And we filled, if you've been there, we filled that giant meeting room. And the program was just totally amazing. Everybody was well in tune to what Irene was able to share with us. We also have worked with Hopewell Ranch, which involves working with veterans. We had a presentation just lately, Female Lighthouse Keepers. And that was well attended. Family programs also include with Mount Pleasant Parks and Rep and McLaren Health, you could go down to the farmer's market, you could pick up a bag or a kit of materials and you could go home and make yourself a fantastic healthy dinner. This was very successful. We have teen programs, role play, gaming, and others. We have adult programs. We had a program just lately on boat building. We do local history. We do Spice of the Month Club, which sounds pretty good, too. I already mentioned the fact that we participated in the movie festival. One of our biggest, well, our biggest program of the year for all ages was held at Maury Courts and that was Under the Big Top. And we had seven hundred and fifty attend that event alone. And it was really, really well received. There were a lot of favorable comments from those that were able to attend. We also have a story walk, which has been set up in Rosebush to be at the Isabella Township Park. And soon, there will be one also set up at Island Park for the kids and families to enjoy, too. One I think you all would have enjoyed was the Family Bake Night a while ago. They made cherry cobbler. Sounds good to me. We also had a gnome hunt that was for the children. They had a good time with that. And of course, in 2023, other programs are currently in gear. And one of the things we love to do at the library is fill our display cases with things of interest. And of course, Black History Month in February was celebrated. We have a lot of displays that involve veterans and we have a lot of cultural displays. If I could, I'd like to close by saying that the Chippewa River District Libraries promote learning, exploring, developing, preserving, reflecting, participating, sharing, collaborating, and enjoyment, which I just call play and fun. So we hope that you will take a look at us online with just CR, Chippewa River District Library, CRDL, online, and you'll have a chance to look at the programs that are online and keep track of your little magazine, because we hope to see you there and we thank you for your support very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I have done Cook the Kit almost every month last summer. Love it. You get to pick out fresh produce that's free and go home and make the kit. It's seriously fabulous. And also the Spice of the Month, which has introduced me to spices I haven't used before, which is really cool at fifty-six. I mean, you'd think I'd use all the spices, but I haven't. And then one thing that really stood out was when they did that Wall of Honor for the vets. Because my brother's a disabled vet. That was really, really cool. That's all I got.
Very impressive and very, very, very strategic.
Yeah.
We're very blessed as a community to have this library in our community. But I also want to say that we've had a lot of presentations and the energy that you two bring is amazing. And so I think we're very fortunate the two of you are serving on our behalf for the library.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we like to think that we're typical of our board two. All of our board members get along extremely well and we have only one agenda. And that is to make our library as valuable to the community as we can. That's what keeps us all. I hope to stay on it for more years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, that brings us to our second presentation tonight, which I'm also excited about. And with that, that brings us to our second presentation tonight, which I'm also excited about. Mid-Michigan Aquatic Recreation Authority Updates from John Zhang. John is, just as a reminder, is the Chair of your Board, your Authority. And with that, the floor is yours.
Let me just start by saying I'm glad I got to be in the agenda with the library. We've got a great district library and it's good that you guys support them. It's a good thing they have in our community. For me, thank you tonight, Township Trustees, for allowing me time to update you on the progress that the Mid-Michigan Recreation Authority is, that you helped create, has done. The Mid-Michigan Aquatic Recreation Authority was formed by the City of Mount Pleasant, Union Township and the School Board. These past two years, we've been working pretty hard. Our original goal was to put a ballot proposal to the voters in the spring of this year. The state statute for recreational authorities under which we are formed mandates that any financing millage vote must be held in conjunction with a statewide ballot issue. There are no statewide ballot issues this year. Therefore, our ballot initiative will not be held until February or March of next year. February, March, meaning they've yet to decide on some of the primary dates. Our goal remains to bring a ballot issue to residents of the recreational district and to see if we're willing to pass a millage to construct the aquatic center. That millage would cost a homeowner with a home valued at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars about seventy-five dollars a year. When the Recreation Authority was formed, we hired an aquatic consulting firm, the Isaac Group. We visited aquatic facilities and researched the community needs and desires. Important to this process was to create a facility whose operation costs would be self-sufficient, not requiring any future taxes to operate. The facility will be located near the northwest corner of Preston and Isabella, near the Oasis School. The property is currently owned by the Mount Pleasant Schools. And we have a letter of intent agreement to acquire the property. The property is in Union Township bordered by the city. You've, I sent that rendering round about what the aquatic center will look like. And you can see that there are two bodies of water. So don't refer to it as the pool. It's an aquatic center. The larger body is twenty-five yards by a hundred and sixteen feet. It has a movable bulkhead that can expand the number of lanes for swimming, lap swimming, team swimming, extensive community recreation and programming and open swim. The separate body of water has zero depth accessibility for children and seniors and handicapped visitors. This warmer body of water will also have a current channel. The pool's warm water temperature will make it ideal for swim lessons, rehabilitation, physical therapy, as well as senior exercise. And will make it comfortable for small children and their parents to stay in the water longer. You can see from the drawings that there are rooms for classes, meetings and ample locker room facilities. Recreation Authority has contracted an architectural firm, Tower Pinkstra. And we're currently, at the end of this month, we'll have an RFP out for civil engineering. Are there any questions about either the location or the drawing that you see there?
It's really cool.
Yeah.
I, we think so. Later in tonight's meeting, you'll take action on requiring the MMARA to have an audit. I'd like to ask the Township Trustees to consider MMARA's request to accept the twenty-twenty-three financial statements and also to accept our request not to do a formal audit. As you can see from the financial statements, their accounting is simple and limited income with a great, with not a great deal of spending. Doing a formal audit would be cost prohibitive for the small amount of transactions we've had. You have a copy of our income statement and our balance sheet. They're accurate and complete. And we intend to do an audit next year. So that'll be an agenda item for you later today. Were there any other questions about the pool that I can answer for you at Aquatic Center?
So if you get the millage for next year, when would the millage start? Would it be next year or the year after?
Soon as it gets voted in, then it starts. And we wouldn't collect money probably until the end of that year. The pool probably wouldn't be completed until twenty-twenty-seven.
Okay.
That puts us a year behind. Our expectation was, when I met before, we said we were going to spring of this year. But the language of Recreation Authority, the Public Act, set the restrictions on when the ballot proposals are going to be held.
And then obviously, one, one year of millage wouldn't be enough to build the building. Are you going to get a bond?
We're going to get a bond. We're going to, as we get closer to that, we'll be working with the township and the city for them to, to serve as the bond agents, knowing that they're going to get paid back through the millage.
Sure.
But yes, that's part of the process that's going on. There is, we've recently formed a bunch of committees to work on all these things that have to happen before this even gets on the ballot. And we've been working on that. And if somebody watches us on TV and wants to join the, this group and get ahold of me, John Zhang. And if I call Mark Schubrider, he can have him get ahold of me. But we have quite a few volunteers so far and that's been helpful. Anything else?
What would the volunteers do? I'm just curious.
Well, we divide it up into several groups. There's a, there's a fundraising group. There's a communications group because we'll need to be doing some education, explaining what's happening, where it's going to be, all those kind of things. There's a facilities group because we've got a, this, there's a lot that goes into it. And there's all the utilities that go to the building, all the chemicals and what kind of storage requirements will be. There's a group that'll work with the, with the county and the legal people because the things that we'll need to arrange, we'll be working on a MOU. We have a letter of intent from the schools right now about the property. But we'll need a formalized memorandum of understanding, be more specific about the transfer of the property and so on.
Is there any chance of getting some grants from the state for this?
Probably so, but it's tough to get a grant when there's no pool there. And you're just saying, we'll give us money because we hope to have a pool. We've solicited Mark to help us because we're asking the tribe for some two percent money to educate the people about this upcoming millage. But those aren't guaranteed. But we're working on, on that. This group that does the fundraising is, is looking at all the possibilities we can think of. And those are the kind of things that we're, we're doing.
That's pretty cool.
I had not heard about your location. I'm excited about that. That's great. And I'm, yeah, I'm glad the school system was willing to work with the authority to give that letter of intent. And it's a great location.
It's a wonderful location.
Multiple reasons. I mean, obviously proximity to the city boundary, as you mentioned. It's in the township. It's currently on what is school grounds. And it's very close to Maury Courts, which is really nice in that, from that perspective, too. So and a good road access with Isabella. You've got good traffic flow. I'm excited about your location choice.
It's right near that high school soccer field.
Yes.
Some of you don't know that. I've got a thing I could pass around if you don't know that particular site. But there's two pieces of property. And one of the things that this engineering group will be working on is to help figure out where, where it's going to sit on what parcels and so on.
So you started with very little funds and you said you're going out for RFP for engineering? So how do you anticipate paying for that?
That's why we have a fundraising group because we're going, we know it's not a simple thing. But we intend to raise some money to, as you can, when you look at the finances, we haven't spent everything yet. But that doesn't go very far when you're trying to do the things we're doing. We also, even the engineering firm that we hired, and that's going to be important because they need to say, yes, we can, this is what it's going to take to build it and here's how this works and draw up formalized plans. But the pre-bond part of it will cost some money, too. So we've got to put some money for those guys, too. And that's why we're doing some of that fundraising now. And we need to pay for it early because we can't wait to see. If it doesn't go good, then we're stuck with bills. And so we can't do that. We have to make sure we're paying upfront. And that's why that money from your group and the city was so, and the school was so important to us.
Yeah.
I just compliment you all. Your separate entity being an authority and no staff and with essentially a volunteer board. You guys, you've, you've come a long way. I'm proud of you.
Me, too.
Thank you.
Extremely excellent, hard work. Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Thanks.
Great presentation.
Yes, sir.
Can we do this every two weeks?
I know. It's fun. With that, we have no public hearings tonight. So that takes us to Item Seven on the Agenda, Public Comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up public comment at seven thirty-four PM.
Hi, I'm Bill Whitehead, owner, operator of Whitehead Farms. I'm going to address the, under New Business Section C, dealing with PA one sixteen. I thought I, we, we sent you a letter from the county and I sent you one letter. But I think, I just want to give you a little history of the background of this. Back in seventy-nine, my parents were approached to sell a property, which is now Meridian Park, a hundred and twenty acres there. And that was, so that my parents were the fourth generation, or I was the fourth generation to own that property. At that point, we decided that we wanted to keep it as natural as possible. And the parents decided, yes, it was time to sell and keep it in the, as it is, has been for almost over a hundred and fifty years. With that, we agreed to name it Whitehead Park. And, but because of the situation at the time, another group of people who owned part of Murphy Farm, which was a piece of landlocked property on the other side of the river, saw an opportunity to get rid of this landlocked property, sell it to the park. When that happened, they decided, couldn't name it after Whitehead Park. Well, obviously it was disappointing to my parents as well as the rest of the family, seeing that we raised sheep on there, cattle, Christmas trees, had picnics on there since the eighteen eighties. So it wasn't named after that. And so obviously, we were a little disappointed with that. Over the years, the, there's a oxbow, if you know what an oxbow is. It's where the river turns and then it goes cut through and doesn't allow the water to flow. The park has been using part of my, my property now as a walkway along the edge of the thing. And that was fine. We, parents didn't mind. I didn't mind. It was to the point, though, that they kept encroaching more and more onto the property. And if you're familiar with that pathway, it's very steep and in the wintertime, it becomes very icy. And some people have been even cutting into my Christmas tree farm area. With that, I talked to the county, said, we need to do something about this. They put me on their insurance. Obviously, nobody wants to be a writer on the insurance policy, so it was time to buy a piece of property from me. After about seven years now, I think we've negotiated it out. And I think it'll benefit the community. It'll give them an opportunity to have a separate path. Bird watching was addressed earlier. This is a great opportunity to use the library's bird watching facilities. And it's been a long time coming. I should say that we did put a stone in there today. And they're going to put a plaque on that saying that the Whitehead family is proud to be part of the conservation and preservation, operation of this park. And that we used to call it Podunk. That's what we called it. And I'll tell you a little story if you don't mind. As my great-grandfather was talking to his mother, where's Pa? Where's Pa? Well, she's got tired because she's, you know, we're talking eighteen nineties. And he says, oh, he's up to Podunk. Well, Podunk is an imaginary place, depending on what definition you use. It's an imaginary place. In Iguancun, it means a swampy area, which Podunk is a little swampy in their places. And it's also a unforgettable or very small town. So on the plaque, it says, we lovingly called Podunk, is on the plaque. So hopefully, this is going to go through. It still isn't complete, but at least I got a plaque up there.
Thanks for the story.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment's still open. Getting still, no one in. See, no one else coming forward. We'll close public comment at seven thirty-eight PM. That brings us to reports, boards and comments, reports and board comments, excuse me. Item nine on the agenda, nine A. I just wanted to lift up, typically, we try to, as a matter of practice, leave open appointments as long as we can so that allows for others to join. And I just wanted to remind us that we do have three seats open on, or coming open on the EDA. One of, one of them is open now because of the resignation of Cheryl Hunter. And I'd like to publicly thank her for her years of service on the EDA. The other two seats are, current members sit there. Both of those have applied. And I just want to give the board the opportunity, if you're comfortable waiting until the next meeting. We do have one more board meeting before.
Sure.
I have no problem with that in light of the, you know, rather recent resignation.
Okay. Very good. And, and just as a reminder, if you didn't notice, for the board seat that was Cheryl Hunter's, her term is up in June. So any appointment we make to that would be a short-term appointment. And then, of course, reapplications for those. And then the only other one I want to really lift up right now is the Sidewalk Committee. Do we have any news on that from your perspective or?
I haven't been given any, but I was going to say, right there would probably get it before I would.
So this is a public service statement here, then, to our board members and the public that we do have an open seat on our sidewalk committee. And that we need to do our best to try to find someone to help fill that. There, there's no requirements to that, other than being a township resident, right?
Correct. Correct. And it's, the Planning Commission is the one who.
Who does the appointment?
Does the appointment.
And I, and I should mention, too, just as a reminder on the EDA, there are requirements that five of the seats, five of the nine seats must be property holders, correct? Is that how it's stated?
Residents or property owners or have.
Business.
Strong business interest in one of the DDA districts.
So there are requirements by state law for that authority. And I, I think we're okay with it at this point. So of the three seats, I think we have to fill at least two of those. Is that correct?
That's correct.
At least two of those with that requirement. We good?
We're good.
Moving on, you all have their month, March Monthly Activity Report. I do love, love seeing that. That brings us to item, any questions on that, I guess, I should ask?
Um, and I don't. Um, down in, under, uh, let me see, because I, just marked this up and then it deleted it, my markups. I'm really sorry. But basically, I don't know what page it's on. It's in the finance section. And it says that we're going to be, you know, updating the uniform chart of accounts. But I thought that was due last year. The, the state?
It's due for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
And we're still in that? So by the end of that?
Well, we're working on the audit for that right now.
Oh, okay. Okay.
A, a more direct answer is, the state wanted us to transition to the new chart of accounts as of twelve thirty-one twenty-two. We have not completed that task yet. We are in the process and should be done relatively soon.
Thanks.
Trustee Thering?
Yeah, I just, I think it was page twelve. It talked about reviewing the delinquent water sewer counts and mailed two hundred and sixteen shut-off notices. Is that, is that kind of high or is that something that's normal?
That's in the normal range.
Is that normal? Okay. I just, I read that and I, for whatever reason, it just stuck in my head that it seems like a lot.
It's normal. It drops, you know, considerably. People come in and pay. By the time we're actively doing shut-offs, it's.
Right around, between forty and fifty is what actually gets shut off.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on. Okay. Agenda item nine, C, Planning Commission EDA Sidewalks, CBA Updates by our Community Economic Development Director. Mr. Nanny?
Thank you. It has been a little while since I've had the opportunity to do this. So I have a number of things to report on. I, I will report on the sidewalk committee that, that committee has not met yet this year. So that, that we just need to. So that, we just need to schedule a meeting, that's what I'm staying with that. So, the, we'll start with the planning commission. We have actually reported on both the February and March planning commission meetings. In February, the planning commission reviewed two site plans. One was in addition to the Maury Courts Building at the Isabella Sportsplex. This is for gymnastics facility that's going on the, on the south end of the building, basically the Remus Road frontage. And they did approve, was a combined preliminary and final site plan for that, subject to a number of conditions, which are being satisfied. They also approved the final site plan for an expansion of Clint's Autobody down in the South Mission Road. Nice, nice project there. And then, they have been working for several meetings, reviewing the master plan. The State Planning Act requires the planning commission, at least once every five years, to review the master plan and ultimately make a decision as to whether or not that plan is, is acceptable, or if it needs to be updated. And essentially, if they find that there's, it doesn't need to be updated, the plan is then, it restarts the five-year clock, as the, that the State Planning Act requires. In this case, they, they did, they've reviewed over several meetings, had extensive discussion on it. And during, during their February meeting, they did ultimately adopt a motion that, that updates aren't necessary. And so that was actually the primary focus of their, their March meeting. They, they did elect officers, officers at that meeting, but most of the meeting was spent in discussion about looking, looking over the horizon, looking out, what would we like our community to be like, ten, five, ten, twenty years from now? And, and, and considering what are the, what are the, for the planning commission, what are their priorities? And so it's, it's a good meeting, if you're interested, take a look at the video, there was a very good discussion, and very, lots of interesting comments. And as I said, that's the start, really, of, of a process to update the plan. We'll be working with them on putting together kind of an outline of, of steps to take and a process to follow. But this was really the first step, is just thinking about the future. As part of that, we did share with them the, the board's end statements, so they're aware of what, what you as a board are looking at, when you look up to the future as well. And so that was also discussed, and will be part of the process moving forward. The EDA board had, also had met in February and March, had two meetings to report there. The agendas were actually similar. We, we had scheduled a presentation, annual presentation from Jim McBride from the Mid Michigan Development Corporation. He had a family emergency in February. It turns out, he had a health problem in March that has kept him away. Didn't learn that until after the meeting, for the March meeting, but he, we're going to reschedule and look ahead to that. If you're interested, sitting over here on the, on the desk are copies of the Mid Michigan Development Corporation's annual report. It's, it's an interesting read, it's worth taking a look at. The EDA board also received updates on some of their projects. Of course, our M twenty East Pickett Road construction project has begun. You've driven that road, and you've noticed that our streetlights and many of our other amenities have disappeared. I have confirmed that our streetlights are stored inside. They're actually, well, almost all of them, they're, they, what they did was they dismantled them, and they've stored them in, inside, basically, their shipping containers, partially dismantled. There were a couple of posts that were still outside, at the contractor's office. But they are stored, stored inside, which is what we asked them to do to protect them. The benches, the planter barrels and other things are, are being removed, and expecting construction to get, get going very shortly. You also have seen a whole lot of work from various utility companies, public and private, as they're moving minds and, and such to accommodate that construction. Those were the main items for the EDA board. And then, we also had a meeting of the zoning board of appeals that took place beginning of this month, March first. They didn't have any, any action items on their agenda, but they did elect officers. You as a board appointed a number of new board of appeals members, and so they did need to elect officers. And we also had them go through training. The township pays for access to the Michigan Townships Association online learning center, and they have an excellent set of materials for the zoning board of appeals. You have access to it, I certainly encourage you to take a look at that, there are a number of great trainings on there, but the, the board of appeals was particularly well-done. And so we had them go through that training before the meeting, and had a good discussion at the meeting, to kind of flesh out that training and answer questions. So that's, that's the, the list.
I just had, I just had a quick question. When they're redoing the Pickard, why did they stop at the township city border? I thought they're doing the entire road all the way to Mission. Is there a reason?
They, they are, but it's split into two years. So the township portion is, is this year, scheduled to be done by November fifteenth, and then the rest of it into, into the Mission Road intersection will happen next year.
Okay, so we get two years of heaven?
Yeah.
Oh, great, awesome. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I have one for you. It's semi-related. The marathon that's being built on Isabella and Broomfield, Dunkin' Donuts. I noticed today they put their sign in, and it's, it's not a monument sign, but it's a monument stature, it's loaded to ground? Is that something that they chose on their own, or?
That is actually something they chose. Our ordinance gives a, a bit of bonus related to building monument signage. If you, if you use that monument style, and we count that as, that little sign as monument style, then it gives them a little bit of extra building monument signage, and they have a number of building monument signs that they wanted to do, so, that, but it was their choice, so we didn't, that was not something we've been asking about.
I appreciate the reminder that we had put that enticement in there, because we've been trying to get people, or get companies to do that. So anyways, I saw it today and I loved it. I thought it looked fantastic.
That would be cool.
Have you seen it yet?
No.
It was just went into the day, so drive by that corner.
Oh, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item nine D on the agenda, board member reports. Let's see, oh, look at, Trustee Brown looks anxious, I'm gonna come right to him.
I was on vacation at last city commission meeting, the next one's March twenty-seventh, so next week I'll hit it and I'll have a report for you.
Trustee Bill?
I'm sorry, I did go to the Mount Pleasant City Commission meeting, and our meeting was canceled, so that was, I can, I can just give a brief when I do the other ones, so. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Bill's?
I attended the Isabella County Board of Commissioners work session yesterday, and they did go over all of their two percent grant requests in detail, and they're doing a lot of stuff this year. But one of the really cool things they're having is a project for, from the emergency management department, for AEDs to be installed in a hundred local facilities, businesses, whatnot. They have to apply for the, you know, for the unit, but then the business would be expected to maintain it, whatnot. But that's really, really cool, because it will prevent a lot of death, which is great. And those are awesome. And then, and then they had a, they had a presentation by the Hatz director, and, because they're also requesting money to finish their renovation, they said that no more dogs are getting out of their kennels, because the kennel latches are broken, so they've got part of that, that part done. But that most of their other stuff is still decrepit, so they, they're requesting money. And the Conservation District is getting money for the septic system cost share program, which apparently helps people that can't afford it, and businesses that can't afford to comply with spillage, or even intentional spillage of sewage into the Chippewa watershed, which is really cool. So I just bring that to light, and, of course, the sheriff's office wants money, too, all the time. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Trustee Smith?
No report.
Treasurer Rice?
We have not met, so I'm trying to?
And taxes aren't due?
Not yet.
Thank you for a little while.
Don't worry, it'll come, it'll come.
Yeah. Clerk Cody?
The road commission meeting for tomorrow has been canceled, so I'm not going to that one.
Okay. You get some free time. Trustee Thering?
Yes, yesterday at our planning commission, as Mr. Nanny had said, we had a very enjoyable conversation about the master plan. And one, there was a few questions, he gave us a little bit of homework to do, and one of the, some of the questions, and one of the questions is, is imagine that as ten years from today, and you're flying over Mount Pleasant area, including the township, what specifically will you have wanted to see accomplished? Sorry, or in place at that time, as you look over the community? So we just kind of sat, literally, we just sat back and we started talking. And just a few of the things that we talked about were, were like, well-lit, wider pathways, the safety concern about the pathways. ADA accessibility, which most everything we have now is ADA accessible, but as it was brought to our attention, that, because I'm very fortunate that I, I don't have to worry about that, but it, we could do better, making it to go above and beyond what maybe the requirements are. Look at industrial zoning, area for pop-up events, retail food trucks, charging stations. We talked a lot about the recreational part of, of a community. I've got, I've got more on the list, if anybody would like to look at it. One of the questions were, what are problems, what don't we want to have happen, or what are we trying to make better? And we talked a little bit about trying to improve the public transportation, talking about some of the industries, new industries out there, to maybe kind of revisit those. The third question is, what are our desired outcomes for the community? What specifically do we want to have happen? And some of the things we talked about are remaining relevant and vibrant, position ourselves to be competitive and growth, and provide more amenities to bring development. And there was, the conversation, I mean, that just kind of touches a little bit about it. But, I mean, the conversation that we had, it was, it was a very enjoyable meeting. So I'm looking forward to more discussion on this topic.
You're the second one to give props to that meeting, and we really should watch it, shouldn't we?
Yeah, I mean, I, and if you happen to have any thoughts, I mean, please, email me, or, or come down and share, or somehow get, get that, get us that information. I mean, ever, it's, it's our community, it's not the planning commission's community, so. So any, any type of information that we could get, any type of thoughts we could get, we would welcome.
Awesome, thank you. I don't have anything to report. EDA met the last two months, and that was covered already. And I believe at our last meeting, I talked about the two percent roundtable, so I have nothing more. With that, that moves us to consent agenda.
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda. Support.
Motion by Bill, support by Cody. I do have one comment that I just want to put out there. I, I had a question that I had forwarded to our manager. One thing I'm always conscious of is spending our tax dollars locally, encouraging local jobs. And so I always look at that. And from my perspective, it costs just a little bit more locally, I'd rather spend them here than I would, say, out of the community, right? Or I'd rather spend it in the state versus out of state. So I happened to look up the three businesses that were bidding for the pump station, the Wet Well Wizards. And it appeared to me at least two of them, and I actually assumed three, were all exactly the same product, it's a Reliant Wet Well Wizard, the product. One was from a Canadian company, The Link Systems. They're headquartered in Canada. And let's see, the Reliant one is, I think, the manufacturer of it, but they're also a distributor of their own products, it appears. They're from Louisiana, New Orleans, I believe. And then, the third one, forgive me for not remembering the name, was from?
USA Blue Book?
Blue Book, thank you. USA Blue Book, and they were in Illinois, I believe. And so I, I asked our manager the question, and with the three hundred dollars difference, we've got US companies selling the same product, why Link? And I got a response from our manager on that, and, and feel free to jump in if I don't cover this very well, but the idea was that through the RFP process, this Link Systems was much more responsive, they seemed to be much more wanting to be servicing the township. And so that kind of gave them the nod, and the fact that they were three hundred, I think it was three hundred dollars difference. But I want to let you know I asked the question, and, because I'm always looking at that stuff. So with that, I'm not suggesting we pull that out, I'm okay with it being a consent agenda, but.
And just a, a small point of clarification, Link Utilities, their corporate headquarters are in Canada, they have a Michigan-based distributor, and that's who we're interfacing with.
And it's still an American product, from what I understand. Whether it's not, it's built here, it's an American company that owns the product itself. So, thank you. Anything else on the discussion-wise? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to new business, eleven A. This is what Mr. Zhang was here for today, or tonight. The Mid Michigan Aquatic Recreation Authority requests to waive audit requirements for fiscal year twenty twenty-two financial statements. Mr. Stuldryer, do you have anything else you'd like to add on this?
There is a staff report, and thank you, and good evening, everybody. There is a staff report that begins on page fifty of your agenda packet. Included in that are the financial statements, there's an income statement referred to in the packet as profit and loss statement for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, also a balance sheet. I think Mr. Zhang covered the issue pretty well in his presentation, so unless you have any questions, I don't think I have any more to add to that. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to consider the request by Mid Michigan Aquatic Recreational Authority, MMARA, to waive the requirement for an independent audit of their fiscal year twenty twenty-two financial statements.
Support. Motion by Bill, support by Brown, discussion?
This makes really good sense. They don't have any money.
You stole my words.
Your motion, instead of consider, can you make it approved, the request?
Sure. Done.
Support.
I agree, it makes total sense, and I'm happy to be in support of it.
Yeah, financial burden, we don't need to put on them now, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's taxpayer money, too. Save some money.
I, I will point out that the statements were prepared by a third party, reviewed with the authority board, and accepted by the authority board. It's evidenced in the minutes that are in the year report packet.
Yeah, I read that. It all looks, looks legit.
Any other discussion? We have a motion to approve the request from the Aquatic Center to waive their audit. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
You didn't know for sure where it was, so let me lead this with Mark, if you could pass that down to Mark, too, so it's just, that's where the property is.
Oh, great.
Thanks, John.
It's not all the property, there's two sections, one is thirteen acres, the other is four and a half. We don't need that much, but it's, it's in that spot.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What's this?
All right, that moves us to item eleven B on the agenda, second reading and potential adoption of the stormwater management ordinance, just for public information. Second reading means that this has been before this board before, so if you don't hear a lot of discussion on this tonight, it's because we've already gone through that process. I don't want you to think we're taking this lightly. And with that, Mr. Stuldryer, do you have anything you want to add to introducing this?
Just to point out that the staff report begins on page fifty-eight. This is to replace an existing stormwater management? This is to replace an existing stormwater management ordinance that was adopted back in 1992. We did review it, as the supervisor indicated at the last meeting. I won't go over all that again, but we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. With that, open the floor up.
Any questions, I'll make a motion if there's no questions. I'd like to make a motion to conduct a second reading, and to adopt the proposed stormwater management ordinance as Township Ordinance Number 23-03.
Support.
Motion by Brown, support by Bills, further discussion? As I told the public, I didn't expect a lot tonight, just based on the fact that we've had discussion on this already, and I appreciate Trustee Smith's comments and questions that came up in our last session. With that, unless there is objection, I'll ask for a roll call from Clerk Cody.
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
And Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
Motion passes unanimously. By my count? That brings us to item 11C in the agenda, resolution of support to release 4.01 acres of PID 14-019-30-002-01 from the State's Public Act 116 Agricultural Land Conservation Easement Program. And this is related to our public comment earlier. Mr. Stuldryer, do you have anything you'd like to introduce on this?
There's a staff report on page 92. I think both parties are, are being served here, the county, by definition, then, all of the citizens within the county, including township. Park will be a bit expanded, will be some reduction in liability risk on the part of the neighboring property owner, Mr. Whitehead. And this is a rather long process, a lot of state agencies involved. This is one step of many. Mr. Whitehead, in conversation before the start of the meeting, indicated that he started this in 2014. He'd been working on it for a while. So we're, we're happy to facilitate this, and then if the board agrees, then your approval would allow the process to continue to, I think the DNR that makes the, maybe the final call on it. Thank you.
With that, we'll open up the floor.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to support the release of 4.01 acres of PID 14-019-30-002-01, a vacant partial with an address of 3465 South Meridian Road, from the existing state of Michigan, PA 116 Program Farmland Development Rights Agreement. Finding that the proposal from landowners William and Nancy Whitehead to donate this land to Isabel County to expand Meridian Park is acceptable in the public interest and for a public use.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Cody, support by Brown. I'm tired tonight, sorry. Discussion?
Love to. This, if, if I can, I'm good.
I'm sorry, sir.
Born here in 1967, when Mr. Whitehead mentioned 1979, his father was driving me in a school bus at that time. This family, it goes back a long time for me, all the way till I was a young guy. And he drove a school bus for me all the way up into my high school years, I believe. I, I can't remember when Wayne actually retired, but what, what a... One of the families in this community that has done a lot for me, I would use that park every year. I fished in that park every day when I was in sixth grade. It just, it means so much to have him step up to the plate, and, and, as the manager said, the amount of time he's put into this, to donate to the community. If anybody knows this walkway that he's talking about, what, what a, what a great asset for the Whitehead family to, to donate in. I wish the park was named the Whitehead Park, I really, really do. But I'm sorry to take up a lot of your time for this, but this one really meant something. It really does. It, it is a great asset to the community, I just want to appreciate, I thank the Whitehead family. Thank you.
I want to thank them, too. I think it's really nice to just, it, it makes sense, and it's just really, really nice.
Any other discussion on the motion? So the motion is to adopt the resolution to allow this property, I don't know if I'm using the right term, exception, transfer essentially, to the Meridian Park happen. Is everybody clear with the motion, right? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Absolutely, yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
And Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our last new business, business item, oh, except for the one that was added. 11D, Policy Governance 3.3 Board Members Code of Conduct. And with that, this is kind of our wheelhouse, this is item three in the Policy Governance Manual. Followed through this, I'm assuming? I will preface that I have some comments coming later that are outside of the norm, but we'll get to that. So let me do our normal process of evaluating compliance by this board with the policy. And so I wanted to just ask this board, if you believe the board's in strict compliance with the policy.
Yes.
Yes? No disagreements on that? Are there things that this board could do to improve the process to be in full compliance? Or to be in fuller compliance?
I don't think so. I mean, I think we all comport ourselves very well. So, that's all I know.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Anything we need to learn or discuss in order to live by its policies more completely? Here's where I'll jump in, I guess.
Go ahead.
So I, I agree that we're in compliance with what's in our policy. As I read through this, I thought our policy was missing something. And so we're not in violation of what I feel we might want to consider adding. And as we, as you go through this, let me see if I can point some of these out. Bear with me, I'm sorry. 3.3.3.2, member interaction with public press or other entities must recognize the same limitation and inability of any board member to speak for the board, except to repeat explicitly stated board decisions. So the, the basic idea behind a portion of this policy is that when we're in the public, we're talking to media, we're talking to other organizations, that we are not giving our own opinions out there as what the township believes, or the direction the township's moving, right? We give board policy, or, or decisions that were made by the board as a whole, unanimous or not, that, that's our position as a township, right? And as a trustee, that's what we're supposed to communicate. If we're going to communicate something differently, I'm trying to think of a good example, where I say, well, I really wish we'd done this, and here's why. I need to make it very clear, as a trustee or representative of the township, that that's a single person saying that, right? Not a board member, because as a board member, we speak for the board, right? And so there is one entity that I kind of felt was missing in, in how we conduct ourselves in those ways. And that was with the organization itself. We, and let me qualify that some more, there are some guardrails or limitations on board members and what we can, how we interact with staff. And that's on purpose, right? Because we have a CEO, a manager, and if we have issues with something, we go to the manager for it. And so that we don't, as an individual trustee, can't tell any staff member to do anything, really, right? As a trustee.
Correct.
Where I thought it was lacking is our interactions with our own boards. We as trustees, there's no limitations or description of what we can say to ZBA, or we say it as a planning commission. And anything that we do, if I were to go to a planning commission meeting and give my views on it, I have to be very clear whether they're township views, or is this resident Brian Milky speaking, right? And I think that we could strengthen this policy by adding some language to that effect. I, I, yes?
I'm sorry.
Trustee Bills?
I personally think that 3.3.3.2 covers that with other entities. I mean, these other boards are other entities, correct?
I, I tried to wiggle to that, like, read it that way, and I just didn't think it was clear enough. Because to me, other entities could be interpreted as, well, no, that's outside entities. Planning commissions, this, planning commission is not another, another entity, because it's part of the township. And so I'd like it to include something like other entities, including the organization itself, right? I, I don't have the language for it, I just wanted to see if there's-
Or any internal boards?
Yeah, I mean, just clarification is all we wanted.
Something like that, if you're talking like internal appointed board, or something.
Can we put it in 3.3.3.1, then? You know, because that's more township-related, if you want to put it there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I, I just wanted more clarity, because I, I think you could read into it either way, that it speaks to our volunteer boards or not. But I thought explicitly stating it would be clear, especially as we all move on and new boards come in, if they choose to adopt the policies that we've set forth, they may, they might find that as a good policy. Not, like I said, I don't have language today for that, I just wanted to see if there's reception to that. If so, then I can try working on that, or-
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
I like it under the- It's protection, yeah. What Trustee Bill said under 3.3.3.1.
Okay.
I think that would be a good fit.
Great. So with that, then, bring back some proposed language, and thank you. Anything else on this?
No, sir.
That finishes our new business.
Except for item E.
Thank you. That I asked to put on here. I had sent an email, we, we have a joint meeting coming up on April 5th. This doesn't need to be long. And if you remember historically, and this is for, more for public consumption, I think our board will remember this, that was Trustee Thering's great suggestion, I want to give you credit, props for that, to move our annual meeting with the other boards from August to this early April. For the, and the purpose of that was so that we could hear from those other boards, because that may play into the board of trustees as we work on our ends, right? It's just another way to hear from our ownership.
Linkage.
Linkage. And so part of that structure of that meeting, though, is each of the chairs of the various boards gives a presentation of what did we do last year, what do we expect that we're going on this year, and what are our ends, essentially, right? That's the presentation. So as chair, part of my responsibility is to put some of that together, but I didn't want to do that without the board having input on that, if that makes sense. And so I wanted a brief discussion, that if you can give me some bullet points, I'll try to draft something up. I will say that I won't be able to work on this probably until April 4th. Because I'll be out of town, but I'll try to get something back. I, I at least want to get bullet points together that we, as a board, want to communicate to our other boards. Does that make sense? So I wanted your input.
So let me just, logistics, real quick. Is this next meeting being held at the-
At Jamison Hall.
Oh, at Jam, that's right, at Jamison Hall. That's right, thank you, because I would have ended up down here again.
Me, too.
Appreciate that, I would have been calling. All right, thank you, that was just a logistical thing I wanted to put out there.
Do you want us to email you suggestions? Do you want us to say something this evening?
Well, I, I would like to have some discussion as a whole body, so that we can have some agreement. Last year, some of the focus was on what policy governance is, and how we govern, right? So that that, people, the other boards could understand how we operate. We could still touch on that if we want. Do we want to talk about more on our ends? Do we want to talk about, I, I don't know.
Link, to improve our linkage with ownership, we, I mean, we could use every board's help.
Right, with that survey.
Whether it's a cer, I mean, come to the meeting, survey, I mean, just be more active, that helps us to become better at what we're doing, I think.
I like, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. I like the idea of talking about the ends a little, too, what we're looking at there, so they know exactly kind of where we're focused, where our focus is. I think that's a good suggestion.
I'm glad to hear the planning commission kind of covered those a little bit already. So, you know, I, I think, as I was thinking about this coming into here, one of the things that I've heard a lot is the, from this board, is the priority to, for safety with sidewalks and pathways. We've been pretty proactive in trying to accomplish some of those things.
We're doing some big stuff there.
Right, and I, and EDA has been a big partner in some of that, too, with Lincoln and High Street, and some of the things that we've done as well. So, do you want to, do, you're right, absolutely, but do we want to re-strengthen that message?
Yes.
And, and support all that's been done by the other boards to help that? Because obviously, the planning commission's been a big part of that.
And then obviously, I mean, maybe not obviously, we could go over the current projects we're working on this year, which is going to be, including Jamison Park Exercise Facility. Bam.
You have found like a, a, like a year in review, kind of, without making it-
Too much.
We don't want to make it too long, but here are some things that we've, well, our highlights, here are some highlights, we're not going to hit them all, but we could, if you hit 10, you know.
Yeah, I like the, it's McDonald Park, right?
Yeah, it's McDonald Park, not Jamison.
Yeah, I think that's worth lifting up, because a lot of them may not be aware of it, and it'll just suddenly appear, and they'll be like, oh, I didn't know that was coming.
Or they drive by it two months later, and what the, you know, what, what, what happened?
Did we approve this?
I mean, i- if, if you want, I'm okay, it's not like we're going to be taking action on this, you know, I always worry about OMA, the Open Meetings Act. So I'm okay if you also have ideas and you want to send them to me. But I will try to put at least bullet points together and, and share those out before our meeting.
Okay.
To see if there's any objections, but.
I think it's a lot, I think we gave you a lot.
I think you did, too.
You could spend an hour talking about-
I'm just not planning that.
Especially if you start on April 4th, right?
Yeah. I, I figured probably having four or five bullet points in a few minutes on each, maybe.
And start time for the public on that meeting?
I think it's seven o'clock.
Seven, same, okay.
Last year, I'm-
Yeah, I thought it started a little early.
Was it longer than an hour? I don't think it was longer than, maybe a tiny bit longer than an hour. It was a good meeting last year, I thought.
It was an excellent meeting.
I think it was closer to two, but I don't remember. Was it?
I don't remember.
There's not an end time on the meeting, it'll start at seven. You'll receive the postings for the meeting. Will be an agenda, but there won't be an agenda packet.
Good.
So I'll, I'll certainly take some liberty trying to put some of this together, but I think I've gotten some direction. If you're all in agreement with what you heard?
Yeah.
Thanks for entertaining me and adding that to the agenda. Moving on, agenda item 12, extended public comment. Extended public comments restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up extended public comment at 8:23 PM. We have no one attending virtually at this point, seen no one coming forward publicly. With that, we'll close extended public comment at 8:23 PM. That brings us to item 13 on the agenda, manager's comments. Mr. Stuldryer, you have the floor.
Thank you. As it relates to your joint meeting, you also may want to just alert them that we are going to be reviewing our master plan, and they can expect to be asked for some input onto that, so they could- and they can expect to be asked for some input onto that, so they could possibly be thinking about that as well. Also like to, uh, let the board know that at the, we've been talking about trying to provide some additional resources to the township clerk and a couple of things over the last couple of weeks that have occurred that I think move us in that direction. The clerk did, uh, request and I did approve a pay increase for the deputy clerk. Deputy clerk had been making fourteen dollars an hour for some number of years. And, uh, we've raised that to seventeen dollars an hour, which I think is, uh, not only an additional resource to that individual, but it will help that individual, um, want to spend more hours if requested by the clerk, so in a direct slash indirect way, that's a additional resource to the office. And then, I think related to that, and it came on the heels of the request for the pay increase, I have authorized that the deputy clerk can have a key to the building. In the past, we've been, uh, providing that key upon request. We're going to give that key now to the, again, at the request of the clerk, to the deputy clerk. So between that and the pay increase, I think you're going to be seeing some more, an increase in the production capacity of the clerk's office. So I want to let the board know about that. And then, uh, did, uh, trustee Bills mentioned it earlier, uh, we are partnering with the county on that two percent request as it relates to the, I call it the AED equipment, I'm not sure if that's right, but. And then finally, um, I'm looking to target the April twenty-sixth regular meeting so that the board can have a discussion on their ends. And it'll, it'll be kind of a two-part thing, it'll be a short report presentation on accomplishments of the ends to date. And then also then, we'll facilitate for the board, or the supervisor can facilitate, but, um, a discussion on the ends as they're, as they currently exist within the document that would normally be reviewed maybe in March, but, uh, I thought if we keep the agenda light with business items, then we won't need to have a separate meeting. So you can anticipate that occurring April twenty-sixth. That's all I have, thank you.
I have a question for you, Mr. Stuhl dryer. With the ends, will we be doing the worksheet again? Because I thought that was quite helpful. The worksheet that we all got, the, before the meeting?
Can you refresh my memory?
Yeah, you sent us a document to fill in our ideas for the ends. And I just really, I thought that really helped us get our ducks in a row.
Sure.
Yeah, especially because we have a new trustee also, and that's on, a good worksheet. I liked it, yeah.
That was the sheet that we did, uh, before the Jameson, we went to Jameson, no?
I don't know what you're talking about, but it was for ends.
Yeah.
Might have been, reason I can't remember, it might have been pre-COVID because I don't know if we had a real solid ends meeting a year ago. In twenty-one, and I know we didn't in twenty, so. But I, I know now the document you're talking about.
I wasn't pre-COVID though, I'm twenty-twenty. I'm just saying, I, I liked it, thank you. And, uh, oh, that, uh, that AED project is actually called Heart Saver, Project Heart Saver.
Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. With that, brings us to item fourteen on the agenda, final board member comment. Trustee Thering?
I am good, sir, thank you.
Clerk Cody?
No comment.
Treasurer Rice?
No comment.
Trustee Smith?
Uh, just wanted to let everybody know, I found this out today. Isabella County Board of Commissioners is having a special meeting tomorrow at four o'clock, room three, three twenty, and they're, they're doing their goal setting session. And some of their items they have on there is, uh, going over the material recovery facility reorganization, um, looking at a millage opportunity, not sure what. Then just, there's about twelve items on there. So it's more of a goal session, I'm going to try to make it, even though I'm not assigned to it, but it just is an interest, I think it'd be good to go there. So just wanted to let everybody know, since Commissioner Angler wasn't here, to let everybody know, and maybe an interesting meeting.
Uh, so they're meeting at the county building?
Yes, right here says special meeting Isabella County Building, uh, room three twenties, so that'd be there up third floor.
Is that from their website?
Yep.
Because I think they still list their regular meetings sometimes, like, okay, thank you. Excellent, I appreciate that, because I did not know about it.
Yeah.
And I was at the meeting last night, so nobody said anything.
Well, I wish I could attend that, I'm going to be traveling tomorrow, but...
I'll try to make it, I can, I'll, I'll try to, but I don't know if my schedule will allow it, but I think it's going to be...
Yeah, that's a good meeting, Bill.
I think it'll be a good one to go to.
Yeah.
Trustee Bills?
Yes, I would like to, um, forward something from Commissioner Angler, because he's on the Conservation District Board, and he, uh, he's, he mentioned that ICRH is having the Party for a Purpose, and that's, uh, and it's a, it's a, like a regular auction, like you hold your paddle up type of auction, not a silent auction. It's at, uh, it's at the Sacred Heart Parish Hall, and it's thirty dollars a person, it's on April fifteenth, it's Saturday. So I'll be having, I have a flyer at my office, but, um, they also, I mean, it's, it's for a good, good cause. Okay, so that's, I mean, that's all I got.
Um, yeah, I don't know, um, as a, as a, as a trustee for the last couple of years, I just starting to notice that the community is just kind of maybe notice that I'm actually a trustee on this board, and they're actually starting to reach out, so it's kind of nice. And actually stopping right by my house, which I have no problem with that.
Oh my.
But, but no eggs, no eggs are possible in it. But I would definitely like to thank the Isabella County Road Commission. Um, I just want to give a quick report on the Isabella Brook field construction. I don't have to drive through water anymore, it is definitely safe. When we get these high water, um, runoffs from the north end of us, which would be east of the Whitehead Farm that comes down through that field. It was always dangerous, there was always water in the road, it was always cars hydroplaning. The, uh, community feels safe at that corner. The community that I'm talking to feels safe at that corner. Every walker that comes down there to check it out, um, actually, if I'm out in the yard, will stop by and talk, and it is two thumbs up by everybody in the subdivisions. Supervisor, uh, may be hearing this also on his, uh, since we're neighbors in that subdivision. But, but the people I'm talking to, um, are, are very pleased with that construction, and I, I would just like to thank the Isabella County Road Commission for working with Union Township. Uh, I think that was an exceptional A-plus project, well done. Yeah, thank you, that's all I have to say.
I want to add to that too, because I don't think there's a problem with potential collisions, you know, without the light there. I, I think everybody knows how to use that four-way stop, so.
The visibility is much better too, I mean, that whole intersection is raised, and you, you can just see, as you're approaching, you know what's in front of you and where cars are coming from.
I hate, I hate to make him famous.
Hey, no, 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 no.
I will mention one thing about a person in the community, but you say it was safe and it was probably within three hours after I made the same comment and my girlfriend's boyfriend got in an accident at that corner.
Oh, no.
Yes, um, fender bender just wasn't watching, whose fault is it? But I won't make him famous and say any names, but, yeah, there was one that I know of so far. I'm sorry for that, but.
Uh, I, let's see, I have three brief things, uh, just spam emails, I, I, I get text calls, um, et cetera, from each of you, like this week, apparently I sent probably majority of you an email, I didn't.
Two.
Oh, two?
Oh, yeah.
Just want you to be on the lookout, make sure you're looking at it, it's... Those weren't from me, um...
Check out the email lines.
Yep, and if, if you want to learn more about how to be safe and look at that, I'm happy to help with that too. Just want to let you know those weren't from me, um, if you bought some gift cards, maybe it was from me. Secondly, um, border, border review, I should have done this in my, um, board member reports. We had our, uh, March border review, that went very well, despite the fact that, uh, you know, all of us saw at least, we saw a five percent increase in our taxes. And I, I have to commend the public by and large for getting it, and I think that speaks to the assessing staff, because I know they fielded a lot of calls regarding that. I think one thing that I, that I take from this, and I, the border review spoke to this too, so I think, um, I can speak on their behalf. In fact, I asked them if it was okay if I brought it to this board, but, um, is the lack of understanding of, that most property owners have regarding their taxes and how to appeal those. And something that the township did years ago was actually a training program where they had held a, a couple of evening classes a couple of times for residents come in and say, hey, this is tax time, if you want to learn how to appeal your property, here's the kinds of things you want to come to the meeting with. Here's the kind of materials you want to provide, here's the kind of arguments you want to make if you get denied, what are your options, Michigan Tax Tribunal, et cetera, et cetera. Most people don't know about this stuff, right? And there are, there are two approaches to that. One, um, some communities have some rather lengthy documentation that goes out with their taxes that explains how that appeal process works. Another is the training, and I just thought we as the township could do better preparing our taxpayers, that if they feel they need to challenge their assessed values, that they have an opportunity to do that in more successful ways than maybe they, they generally are. Because there were quite a few that came that maybe didn't prepare properly because they didn't know how it works. Trustee Bills?
I would say that rather than sending that to the entire tax base, that we would put a notice in there that if they do want to appeal their tax bill, that we have a, a document that will tell them exactly how to do that, and we can mail it out on request.
And maybe put it on the webpage, we maybe have something there already.
Well, not everybody has internet, so, not everybody can afford that, so.
I understand, but that's still, yeah, and we can send it out if, otherwise.
I think that.
So, the border reviews decided that in their July meeting, they would like to talk about this. Part, part of the landscape change that's happened here, um, I'm getting in trouble with the manager, I can tell right now. Part of the landscape change is we've gone from a contractor position to a W-two, hoping that provides maybe a little more latitude from the administration as far as what you're able to accomplish and not accomplish with the assessing department. That's why hopefully I'm not making assumptions I shouldn't be here. But I, it did seem important to me that we made sure our residents are educated on how they, what processes are available to them and how we go about, how you go about doing that.
I think it's a great idea because I don't have the first clue. So, I don't.
Okay, well, we, we got a year till next March, but I at least wanted to introduce that idea that be thinking about ways we can better educate. And with that...
How many appeals did you hear this year?
You know, it was a lot less than I figured, um, I have my minutes still up. If I were just to guess?
Yeah, guess is fine.
If, if you take out the, the poverty and the veterans exemptions, um, two dozen?
Oh, jeez, that's...
Yeah, it was, I was surprised. And that, that's why I wanted to compliment the assessing staff, because I, I know they fielded a lot of calls. People are, it went up five percent, well, yes, everybody's good.
Yeah, our expenses went up sometimes thirty percent or fifty percent, so, I mean, I, I can understand that, even though it was sticker shit, I gotta tell you.
That's, that's really, that's, that's good.
Yeah, it was much less than I thought, so we had a lot of idle time, so, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Uh, we have finished our business, so with that, I'm happy to entertain any motions to adjourn.
Move to adjourn the meeting?
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Brown, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Have fun on your vacation.
Hey, thanks.
Enjoy your vacation, be safe. Enjoy.